Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Great, thank you. Can we have a roll call? Pam McLeod.
Pam McLeod.
Lyle Adkins.
Karen Kurtonoff.
Eliza Jolay.
Heidi Duford.
Bob Cullison.
Peter Levitt.
Jay Fitzpatrick.
Jason Henry.
Kristi Heickel.
Kathy Grillo.
Great, thank you. We'll start off with some public input. Do we have anyone who would like to give us any public input this evening? We've got a big crowd tonight, but no one wants to say anything.
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. Seeing none? Like to review the agenda. Jay has something he'd like to add under action items. So let's make that item B under action items for the outing club. Is there any other changes anyone would like to see?
Under informational items, can we just add I have an update to our request for the school funding session?
Sure. We'll make that.
C.
C.
C. Perfect. Anything else? Any motion to accept?
Make a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of August 7th, 2018.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, let's move on to the superintendent.
Okay, welcome everyone. Just a couple of things very quickly. We had a very smooth opening of school this year. Freshmen came back last Wednesday. We had to have an early closing because of the heat and humidity. They were expected to go outside in the afternoon and participate in outdoor team-building activities and it was just too hot. So we did the morning part of the program so they could get acclimated to the school. And I'd say by and large today, pretty much the freshmen are fitting in pretty well. Hard to tell them apart from the upperclassmen. Upperclassmen came back with the freshmen on Thursday, so now they've had their second full day together. So things are going very well. Just would like to let you know, last meeting I had asked for some right-to-know information, and I hope you all got the emails, that that's no longer necessary. Because the case against the school board brought by Jeffrey Clay was settled by Primex, our pooled risk management program, and the settlement should have no impact on the SAU's financial positions, because it was a settlement through Primex. With that being said, I turn the rest over to Principal Jay.
Good evening, everyone. As Bob mentioned, the opening of school was a success, at least on my end. I think the kids enjoyed it as well. We had freshmen here last Wednesday. They had undivided attention here by themselves. As Bob mentioned, it was an abbreviated day, but we got the bulk of what we needed to get done accomplished in the morning time. On Thursday, we had everybody here. Everything seemed to go smoothly again. And again, today was the second full day of having everyone here. So we're off and running. A few schedule changes happening here and there, but by and large, it's been smooth. So I wanted to share with you something I do at the beginning of every year, is I share with you a combination of a few different presentations. And one of them, one of the presentations that I did was a couple of weeks ago for parents of new students. So we host, I hosted an evening event and just go over some of the finer points, some of the bigger issues that come about, and answer any questions that people may have. So that was attended by a larger amount of people. It's probably more folks than previous years, so it was really cool to see. And of course, we had a two-day teacher workshop at the beginning of school where we went over some get-to-know-you stuff, some new business, some old business. So I just put a slideshow inside your folder, and so if you pull up, you can follow along. Otherwise, wasn't quite sure how to present tonight, seeing that you all have Chromebooks. But so what I like to do with staff is review data from the closeout of last year. And so the first slide you'll see, or the second slide you'll see is the 2018 graduation data. If at any point in time you have questions about any of this, please let me know, otherwise I'm just going to continue to go through it. The 2018 graduation data, you can see our numbers there. I emphasize that these are plans. These are not definitive what is happening. These are the intentions that they have, and as you know, sometimes the best intentions can change at the last moment. That total's up to 99 percent. 1 percent was the exchange student that we had who has gone home, so if you're doing that math. No, you might be. The retention data, you can see there, those are the numbers that were retained in 2018 versus 2017. The four seniors that were retained, three of them were special education students. So those are students who are on a longer program, who are coming back for additional time. The PSA, or sorry, the SAT scores. You know, this, out of all of the things that happened here at the opening of school and all of the wonderful things that we have to be proud of throughout the year, this is what I would say is the dark cloud that looms over us. And this was, we spent a lot of time this summer looking at this and discussing. I met with the math department a couple of times as soon as we came back. And really, if you're looking at this, it's our 2018, which is the March 21st SAT, statewide SAT day that we had. And you can see in the math column that 29 percent of our kids met proficiency, which compared to where the state was at, which was 42. We were well below what our expectations are. We typically hover right around the low 40s range. We're usually either a point or two higher or lower than the states. So this was a little bit concerning to us. We have talked about it. We have some theories as to why. We have some program changes that we are going to put in place in hoping that a combination of multiple interventions will see those scores improve this year during SATs. Moving on, AP scores. Again, I share this with you. It's great that we, it's such a small school, and that we can offer a wide range of AP scores. I know some of our staff who teach AP were a little bit disappointed in performance. However, as I reinforce to them, it's terrific that we're able to offer these courses, because regardless of how well you do on the test, the fact that you get to take an AP course and experience what the rigor and the pace would be of a college-level course is a learning experience in itself, with almost a certainty that any of these students who went on to a four-year school or a two-year school are going to be better prepared in the classes that they're taking. So I survey faculty and staff at the end of every year, and I've been using the same instrument for a while now, just to kind of get an indication of how they're feeling regarding culture, how they're feeling regarding discipline, teaching, learning, things of that sort. This is a quick overview of the past three years. It's nice to see their teaching experience was, I would put it into the good-to-great category from this past year. The culture, culture is big. Culture is very important, and it's great to see that in this case, over 95 percent, 97 percent feel that culture here is good to great.
Jay, is this, excuse me, is this the teachers you surveyed here?
Yes, teachers and staff, yep.
Okay, thank you.
The role of the intervention room. This is the thing, the strategy that we use for discipline. We have what I like to refer to as a well-oiled machine in terms of our processes and procedures. As you can see, most people feel really good about its role, how it functions. The next slide, the intervention rooms, just quick stats in terms of what discipline looks like. Intervention room is primarily used for when kids are removed from a class during a particular period. So if Pete got removed from his second-period class, this is the process that we follow. So we had 85 kids who were kicked out of the class once, and only one student who was kicked out of the class for the fourth time. So we provide positive interventions along the way, which helps minimize those numbers as time goes on. disciplinary process, again, the processes that we have in place, by and large, people feel good about them. After-school administrative detentions, these are the ones that the administration hands out for infractions that are a little bit more serious and that are above and beyond just classroom infractions. And again, by and large, when you take five hundred students and put them in a building, teenagers, and you put them in a building for 180 days a year, these numbers are actually pretty solid. You can see that the top five categories, inappropriate behavior and cut class, you know, we're talking inappropriate behaviors, you know, they could be doing anything from poking and prodding each other, just do talking when they're not supposed to be talking. So by and large, these are good infractions to have. In-school suspensions. Again, the numbers are positive. Possession of a prohibited item. It was a tough year, and I suspect it's only going to continue to get tougher. All, there were actually, I believe, 18 infractions, possession of a prohibited item. All 18 were e-cigarettes, vaping, jewels, and things of that sort. So it's certainly a problem, global, well, at least here in the United States, it's a significant problem. So we will continue to deal with it as it comes about. Out-of-school suspensions, the next one. Again, numbers are pretty low. Eleven different students who received out-of-school suspensions, three of them being freshmen. So. Quick annual reminders of what I go over with teachers, and this is just a couple of them, some of the more important ones that relate to teaching and learning. I really put an emphasis on making sure that staff is using homework correctly and that it's not just being assigned for busy work. The practice of formative versus summative work, and separating the two out. Formative work being the practice that is leading up to the performance, which is what we call the summative. Okay? I'm always asked what my vision is, and the irony is that I put my vision out there at the beginning of every year, so I'm going to share this with you as well. This is my vision. I do believe in this, and this has been my vision from day one since taking over here at Prospect Mountain. I believe that we can do this, and I believe that every year, we do continuously improve. My principal goals are as such, and they're not ranked in any particular hierarchy. They are just what my goals are from year to year. School goals. This is what we as a staff will continue to work on this year. We began much of our process, as you know, had our collaborative conference visit for NIASK this past spring. And so a lot of the work that we are going to be embarking on this year will come down to working for reaccreditation. The next several slides are the report commendations. I had gone over them with you at the last meeting, as well as the recommendations, so I'll ask that, just go through those relatively quickly. We will continue. The slide that I'm on now is titled Continue Working, Continue Work on Updating Curriculum. And this is a commendation, as well as a recommendation that we did get from NIASK. It's something that, so that you know, every early release day that we have this year is dedicated to our continuous work on curriculum development. That is making sure our curriculum contains what I refer to as the viable guaranteed curriculum. And that is viable. If you go to the next slide, this ensures that all students have an equal opportunity to learn, guaranteed meaning that the same curriculum is taught by the same teachers if you're teaching a commonly taught course. If Peter and I are both teaching Algebra I CP, we better make sure that our students in either class are receiving the same opportunities through the same curriculum. It does not mean that our instruction is going to be the same, but hopefully, if we are doing a good job in collaborating, there's at least some commonalities and at least some assistance. Viable meaning the amount of curriculum that we have to teach coincides with the amount of time that we have to teach it. In this day and age, it just seems it's more and more that we need to teach, and it just seems to be less and less time that we have available to teach it, for whatever reason. We began on day one, working on some of our recommendations, and one of our recommendations was to develop a school improvement slash growth plan. So teachers broke up into teams, and they created what they felt were their own long-term and short-term goals. And they took a survey, and they filled that out, and gave that data back to me and the steering committee. Before this meeting is over, I'm going to send you through your PMHS school email that very same survey, and I'm going to ask that you contribute as well, because as you can see, we're to engage all stakeholders, and so we have a plan to not engage you, but students as well as community members. So if you could complete that survey, that'd be great. Should you choose not to, that's fine, too. I actually cannot see what you write, or who wrote it and when, so if you don't want to, it's not obligated. I'm obligated to make sure I offer to you, but you are not obligated to. Okay? Our school growth plan, these were the three questions. What are our short and long-term goals? How do we accomplish these goals? And how do we engage all stakeholders, such as students and parents? You will see those three questions on the link that I send you. Okay? The objective is what the teachers had. Core values. If you can continue a couple more slides, you see a title that says core values. These are the qualities that we want to be instilled in our students modeled by us as the adults, instilled in them in their everyday existence. And beyond academics, these are the values that we hope the students have and take away with them when they leave here. And last year, we began working on this, and what we did is, we created a list of about 60, and then as a group, we condensed that list down to 11. And from that 11, we condensed it down even further to, right now, what I'll call five and a half. Because on the first day of school, we were flushing these out a little bit more, coming up with the solidified definition, and it seems like the overwhelming amount of staff also want to include intellectual curiosity as a sixth core value. So that's why you see five with intellectual curiosity down there, hence five and a half. Okay? So in the survey that I send you, I'm going to ask that you review, you review that list of core values. If there's anything, anything you want to contribute at all, you think that explanation is unclear, or you think that the actual word itself is unclear, or needs further description, or don't agree with it, this is a good opportunity to voice your concern. Okay? The objective, again, is what we were working on, and we are currently working on beliefs about learning, and that will be a homework assignment for you at the next board meeting. So, any questions? Did you get all that? If you do have any, obviously, you can shoot me the email. I'll send you the link. If you have any problems with it, please let me know. Otherwise, unless you have any questions about the opening of school or anything, I'm all set. Thank you for your attention.
Thanks, Jay.
All right. So our student rep has not been picked yet, I imagine?
They have their first meeting tomorrow, so.
All right. So maybe next month. Do we need a long poll?
Yes. Under the provisions of RSA 91A32K. Do you want me to read it?
Sure.
Okay, we're asking to enter into non-public for the consideration by a school board of entering into a student or pupil tuition contract authorized by RSA 194, RSA 195A, which if discussed in public would likely benefit a party, parties whose interests are adverse to those of the general public or the school district that is considering a contract, including any meeting between the school boards or committees thereof involved in the negotiations. And this was what was brought to your attention at the last board meeting by the Building and Grounds Committee that we'd be having this meeting tonight. So we'll need to do a roll call.
Okay. In order to move into non-public, we need a roll call.
Yes.
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 Very good. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're now in non-public.
So I would like to make the motion that we form a study committee to explore options to tuition in students from other towns.
Second.
Any comment, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Great, thank you.
Here, do you say you wanted a motion to seal the minutes?
I think we need to, no. Okay. So let's move on to information items. Disposal of outdated IT devices.
I make a motion, we approve the sale of the outdated devices as listed.
I'll second. Any discussion?
I just wanted to mention, at the Alton Board, we changed the policy so that we do see a list of things that are disposed of, but don't necessarily approve them, because it is incredibly efficient to keep old equipment laying around while you wait to dispose of it for several months. So that's something we might want to think about going forward at a future board meeting, is looking at that policy. Usually, if people can use something, they keep it and use it, make good use of it.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? No. Excellent. Committee reports, policy committee. Oh, I'm sorry. Committee reports. Just the policy committee.
Kathy, do you want to, do you want me to take that, or do you want to do it?
You can do it.
Okay, the policy committee met this evening. The first item on the policy committee is the memorandum of understanding for administering the provisions of RSA 193D. This is something that's always been in place. This is the agreement we have with the Alton Police Department for our school resource officer. If you'll recall, at the last board meeting, I talked about that we were working to get a REAP grant so that we could fill in, because right now, we share one school resource officer with Alton Central School. So we have a school resource officer every other day. So on the days that that school resource officer is not here, we're going to pay for a part-time school security officer to be here as well. It'll be someone from the Alton Police Department, and they'll share the duties with our current SRO, Kristen Guest. So the grant will pay for the position. Again, this is a shared position we'll be sharing with Alton Central School through the Alton Police Department. So the memorandum of understanding has been revised to include that second position. It's very similar to what was already approved by the Alton Board, so it's, because it's an agreement between Alton Central School, Alton Police Department, Prospect Mountain High School, because we're in the same jurisdiction. Our contract is identical, our memorandum of understanding. So it's, again, as I said, a revision, so I would ask that the board make a motion to accept the memorandum of understanding, so I can get the signatures and get it to Police Chief Heath.
I make a motion that we approve the memorandum of understanding with the Alton Police Department.
Second.
Any discussion?
There's a, just on number two in the third bullet, there's a page number stuck in the middle of that, in the school employee paragraph there, the bullet. It says page 2 of 5 on the second one down. I don't think that's supposed to be there.
Oh, yep.
That does read a little weird.
What are we seeing?
So under definitions.
It says page 2 of 5.
Third bullet down. In the middle, there's a page 2 of 5 stuck in there.
Yeah, that's, I don't know how that got there. I'm sorry. So we'll make that revision.
Okay. Any others? All in favor of the revised policy, Nancy Maria?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next is the annual review of Policy DFA, which is our investment policy. This is a requirement of the auditor, that each year, we look at Policy DFA. You'll see that it's been reviewed, it was approved back in 2010, it's been reviewed annually, and it's time for it to be reviewed. Basically, it talks about the framework for safe and prudent investment of our funds. It talks about the authorization of the school treasurer, working with the superintendent and designee, which would be Heidi, to invest the funds. The objectives are the safety of the principal, the liquidity of the investment portfolio, the standards of care, prudence, ethics, and conflicts of interest, internal controls, and reporting. We do a financial report annually with an independent auditor. We also do regular financial reports with our banks, so, and we also do it with the finance committee, so. Basically, this is just a review. This is not establishing a policy. This is not a change to the policy. This is just that we've, as a board, we've looked at this and we're ready to move forward.
Make a motion that we approve Policy DFA, investment policy.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The other policies, numbers three through eight, EFAA, GBEF, JICL, DIH, JICFA, and JLF are policies that, for the most part, were existent, but there were changes based upon, sometimes editorial changes, where Prospect Mountain High School was, replaced the word district, or there could be some where there were fraud prevention and fiscal management. DIH was already brought forward for the school board's first reading back in January, but it needs a second reading. JICFA is a statement of policy and definition of hazing regarding our policies, and you'll see that there are some, on the back page of that, there are some changing, changes about furnishing each student and teacher at Prospect Mountain High School with this policy being printed in the student handbook. So this was, this was a small change, reviewed by the policy committee, needs to be approved by the board. Reporting child abuse and neglect. You'll see on the first side of that page, there is a paragraph regarding the principal of the school posting a sign in a public area, and there's also a change from 48 hours for oral notification to 24 hours. That's already been approved. These are changes that need to be approved again. So we're looking at EFAA, GBEF, JICL, DIH, JICFA, and JLF being approved by the board.
Turn in a long, or do you want one at a time?
We turn it long, because this is the final reading.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve policies EFAA, GBEF, JICL, DIH, JICFA, J, and JLF for a final reading.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All right. Next, finance committee, accepting the REAP funds. Eunice is not here.
In your packet, there's just a memo saying the REAP grant, we finally got awarded, and the amount is $37,124, and this grant is used for the part-time school resource officer, and also for security. We're actually purchasing security cameras, new security cameras for the building.
Make a motion that we accept the REAP grant for $37,124.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
A couple of other things under finance committee. Heidi can give an audit update.
The auditors were here last week. They completed the onsite portion of it. I do have figures, preliminary figures. Obviously, it still has to go to review in their office before I can bring the final of the audit, but I just wanted to bring that forward to let you guys know. I did email both business and administrators in your districts to let them know, so it's out there. So the total fund balance at this time that's going to be returned is $250,409.87. And split, Alton will be receiving 52.51 percent, which is in the amount of $131,490.22. Barnstead at 47.49 percent will be receiving a
Barnstead at 47.49% will be receiving $118,919.65. Again, we're not approving it, I'm just, this is preliminary. I'll come forward, hopefully, before the holiday season, with my notes. But those.
So, that wasn't dropping your original projected number?
It was higher. You're getting back more than what I thought, but I wanted to come in conservative.
The other thing we would ask for during this time, under finance committee, would be the update on the warrant. Karen, I don't know if you can help us out with that?
Sure. So, the Alton Budget Committee met, and this is after the Alton School Board approved to recommend the revised CBA and revised warrants for a vote. And then, I think everybody saw the timeline at the last meeting, and the budget committee. And on schedule, we had our meeting on August 22. Heidi and Bob were kind enough to also attend and give a brief presentation on what any changes were. There are a few questions. Ultimately, the Budget Committee approved unanimously to recommend the revised contract and warrants. So, we're basically going through the motions of the schedule to work towards the vote, which will be on October 15, and Prospect was chosen as location for that special election.
It's a good move.
And the only thing that came up at Budget Committee, they'd like to have a list of what was encumbered at the end of the year. I don't know if that's standard practice, but that was requested, so I'll talk to you about that one. And also, they proposed talking to both schools, Alton and Prospect, about the possibility of standardized procurement contracts, which hopefully would help limit exposure and liability in contracts with other parties, and maybe have a joint session on discussing that with some experts. Those are something they were looking into. That's it.
Are you? All right. Next, school funding.
Yeah. So, at our last meeting, I gave some background around the school funding session we attended in June in Pittsfield. So, I reached out to Andrew Valinsky, who hosted that, to see if they had any availability, and we could do that here. Unfortunately, for two reasons, he said not at this time. So, the biggest one being availability. So, since the Pittsfield session, which was very well-attended by people throughout the state, they're basically on a travel and road show. And at this point, they were actually going to Berlin in two days. As you know, Berlin's very property poor, so it's a huge topic there. But outside of that, they're really looking at places, you know, how can they get to the most people possible? So, in September, they're also hosting one in Keene. He didn't have the exact date, but they're hoping to do one in Rochester in October, and Nashua as well, before the election. So, partially because we're a smaller district. Secondly, Pittsfield did have a fair amount of Barnstead residents in attendance, so they're looking at, we came pretty close to the area, and how well-attended would it be? So, at the Barnstead meeting, we did talk about, if I can get firm on the Rochester date, possibly putting something in the paper, just saying, you know, on behalf, and certainly if this group's happy with that, but something like, on behalf of the school boards, we would like to.
Encourage you to.
Encourage you to attend the school funding session that will be held in Rochester on whatever date.
We could be helpful with that, put that on the school website as well.
Yeah. So, kind of just as, you know, we're not hosting it, we're not part of it, but just an informational, where it is the closest location that they're going to do.
Next, action items. Personnel remit.
Okay.
Resignations.
Okay. We have a couple of resignations. First resignation is Lauren Dennis, resigning from a position as paraprofessional.
I move we accept the resignation of Lauren Dennis as paraprofessional.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The second is the resignation of Nicole Rot, resigning from a position of paraprofessional.
I make a motion to accept the resignation of Nicole Rot, and congratulations, since she got a special education teaching job.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then, we have a couple of new hires.
I move we accept the hire of Peter Brophy as paraprofessional.
Okay. Want to do them all?
No, we all do them one at a time.
One at a time?
That's one at a time.
All right. So, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move we accept the recommendation of Amy Haskell.
Second.
As paraprofessional.
Second. All in favor?
I have a question on that.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just curious, because that person graduated from high school last year, if that's typical?
It's not typical.
Is there a reason for it not being typical?
Most of the workers are folks who have been out of school for separate years. This one was unique. I don't think Lois knew how old she was. Obviously, you can't ask. But I don't think Lois knew how old she was prior to interviewing her.
But obviously, her.
I'm sorry.
But she had a resume, obviously, for the interview.
She had sent, I had put out a blast through social media, and so, she had sent up an interview with Lois, and I believe brought her stuff in for the interview. And so, wasn't aware until that time. She's working with, she's a one-on-one to a student who, she's replacing Nicole, so she's working with a very needy student.
Just, I'm not sure.
I'm just trying to be.
Do we need to go into non-public to continue this discussion? It feels a little icky.
Yeah, that's why I'm struggling.
Not the thing. It just feels wrong to discuss it. Yeah. Can I make a motion? So, I move we enter another non-public session. Do you want to do it now?
Can we do the rest of them first, then come back? Do the rest of them, and come back.
Okay. Moving on. I move we accept the recommendation of Lori Johnson as paraprofessional.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move we accept the recommendation of Elaine Moline as paraprofessional. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So, we've had a motion to go into non-public under 91A32.
I don't mind any more.
Yeah, so, we're trying to put the number, the right number.
Public input.
Public input.
You want to public input first, or are we coming back out with anything? Oh, sure. You public input? Yeah? Oh, all right.
Perfect. We love.
You can do the hiring.
David Allen, and just for the record for the Baysider, well, one for the Baysider and one for the political world. But the question about a committee to look at tuitioning students in, is the purpose of that to consider it, or is it to explore how to do it effectively?
It is to consider it.
Okay. Great. And then, the second question, Eliza, do you know if the school funding group has materials that can be used to ask legislative candidates how their positions?
I can ask him that. I don't know their, and did you attend the session in Pittsfield?
I wasn't able to.
So, that was pretty much their message at the end, was to say, for anyone that's running for office, what's your position on school funding?
Right.
And how do you think we go about resolving it?
Okay.
So, that is their intent and their message.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. I missed the outing club under action items.
I just thought you spoke enough today. I have. The outing club has requested their annual overnight trip to Moon Island in Squam Lake. This is something they've done for the past couple of years. Wasn't able to get it in time for the agenda, so I carried it in. They're looking at bringing it to 12 people. The cost of the trip is probably about $10 contribution, and some of the other funds come out of the outing club budget. Transportation would be staff cars, boats, and the people who are going are certified and have the proper licensing and things to pass for.
When are they doing this?
Departure date would be the 28th, and they would be coming back on the 29th. Leave about 8:00 in the morning, come back about 4:00.
Is that September?
Yes.
What is the way to call it?
Squam Lake, Moon Island.
I make a motion that we approve the outing club request for Squam Lake field trip.
Second. Any further discussion?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, thank you.
Karen, do you?
Okay.
I still have one.
It would be this one.
Yeah. I move we enter a non-public session under 91A32C.
Second. Okay. Roll.
Yes.
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 Okay. We're in non-public.
Good night, everyone.